Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes are not available for tonight's meeting, for the July 7th meeting. They'll be available on September the 4th, along with this meeting's minutes. Public comment.
Hi, so Jessica Valles, 22 Cherry Street. So we have a lot of rental properties in the neighborhood there. Per Todd, there are 56 rental dwellings, 42 properties, and 198 parcels of land in Seven Valleys. So rental homes make up about more than 25% of the homes in Seven Valleys. And I would like to propose a rental inspection program where we can hire somebody to go and make sure that homes are up to code and that tenants are taking care of their, or not tenants, landlords are taking care of their properties. Since I moved here in 2022, there's one property in the neighborhood that's had recurring flooding, and the tenant has been the one responsible for removing the water. It happens every time there's a large rainstorm. There's never been mold remediation, and there's never been talk of a sump pump, but for some reason, it's never been taken care of. There's also been instances where their handrails aren't attached, overloaded circuit breakers. There was one house where there was a crack in the ceiling, and they notified the landlord, they didn't do anything, and then they got on video the cracked ceiling falling on their child's bed in the middle of the night, but they knew that there was a crack, and so they moved the child out ahead of time. There's also holes in backyards that are like big enough that a child could fall in, unsecured fixtures like kitchen counters and cabinets. And one resident even posted on the Facebook group that it was like a 90-degree week, and their landlord said you could not turn on the AC for some reason. So I would like to bring up this rental inspection program to hold our tenant, or our landlords accountable, because our tenants do not argue with these conditions for fear of retaliation, for fear that they're not going to be able to renew their rent. Many go month to month. So, and these are, I feel like mold remediation in a flooded basement, if it's been flooding for over three years, like that's a problem. Why haven't you taken care of that? So the positives are that it ensures the maintenance of homes, increases or maintains the property values of the home, it acts as a source of revenue for the borough, the landlords will pay the inspection fee, not the borough, and it protects our residents from slum lords. I also looked up that there is a Pennsylvania Association of Borough Rental Inspection Program course that they do to like help you get this set up. Everything follows the International Property Maintenance Code, and other local boroughs do it, such as Spring Grove, Glen Rock, Red Lion, Hanover, Dallas Town. So there's probably going to be pushback from the landlords, because of course they don't want to have to fix up their properties, but that's the whole reason that we want to do this, because tenants are not able to voice it for, again, fear of retaliation. So I wanted to bring that up because this past summer I've seen a bunch of things, and I kind of just kept a tally of everything, so that's it.
Questions, comments? Counsel? Okay, thank you. Engineers' report.
We have an application for payment number one. As I emailed everyone, it was just provided to me today by Lucas at James R. Holly and Associates. The total contract price is $212,551. To date, work that's been completed and stored was $28,492. 10% retainage is $2,849.20, leaving a current payment that we're seeking approval for is $25,642.80. And this is all mostly stormwater work, so this would come out of the ARPA grant, not Community Development Block Grant Funds. So just need a motion and approval by council to authorize payment.
And the engineer is recommending payment.
That's correct, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that for completion of the storm sewer?
No, no, it's just work to date. Yeah, they have more work to do.
And this was a scheduled, payment schedule going into it?
Yeah, we'll probably get another three or four over the course of time here, so.
Did Holliday inspection?
Right before the projects start, they told me they would be down two, maybe three hours a day. Now, I haven't seen any written reports or anything yet at this point, but.
But we are holding retainage.
They're degraded and they look good, but they got them degraded with bricks or something. I didn't crawl down into them. They're not bricked or parched up on the inside. They just used that spray foam to keep material from coming in. That's why I wondered if that was for.
I can double check. Yep, no, no, definitely not, not full payment. Because for the work they've done to date, we'll be holding over $2,800.
And while you're making notes too, I know Zach made comment about the stones. And over and above the stones, they actually made cuts in the macadam, then backfilled it with stones. His concern was, and I'm not sure what the scope of work was, of backfilling that with coal patch, because those stones get kicked out on a daily basis. Now, they attempt to put it back in.
There should be coal patch around them inlets where the.
There's, I didn't get by today, there's none today.
You get a big gully washer and all them stones going down.
Yeah, my concern also, along with that, is the cut edge of the street, the macadam, is getting deteriorating from being run over. And are they going to make another cut before they actually put the pavement down, so it's a good edge?
Yeah.
If not, it's not, it's going to be.
If it's burc up, they'll have to.
Yeah, Zach did say something to me on Thursday, and I did shoot an email off to Restucia and asked them to do that, so they had Friday and today, but. So let me reach out to Lucas, let him deal with them with the engineering firm.
Pable Street's saying why.
Okay.
They just use spray foam and then gravel. We get a good rainstorm like before, it's all going to be gone.
Any questions on the pavement? Let's do, do we need a motion to execute that?
I'll make a motion.
Mark, made a motion?
Second.
Greg, Greg's second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no? Motion carried?
All right, the only other thing is, I asked for an update on South Road. The email I got back is that Russell Standard's ready to go, but they're waiting on a contract from York Materials. So I don't know how long that's going to take, but all I can tell you is that's where we're at right now. So as soon as that comes in, they'll be ready to get started. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Solicitors' report.
Nothing new on the mediation, no updates for the State Police report.
Is there any to?
I have nothing in particular. Everybody had a copy of that, if you had a chance to look over it, if you have any questions?
So so far, people have been taking care of things themselves? We haven't had to call in someone to do any mowing?
Not yet.
Okay.
Todd, I need to ask, what about 42 Church Street? What are they doing with that? I mean.
Yeah, well, I.
That is really bad.
He and I have been emailing back and forth. He did finally get the stuff that was growing out over the sidewalk so far, and he did send me photos of that, I think, on Wednesday or Thursday. And I did email him a separate violation notice for that, and I offered for myself to go down and meet with him to talk about, you know. His argument is they're all native plants. Well, I know they're not all native plants. I'm not a plant expert, but there's certain things I, yeah. So I just followed up with him Friday, maybe with an email. I haven't heard back from him yet, so, but it is on the radar for sure.
I mean, just like Jessica said with the landlords, this is, this is the same thing with the people that own properties. I've said this before, if you want to own a house, then you need to take care of your property, if not live in an apartment. You know, because look at all these that are overgrown.
Yeah, because now like 34 Church next door, they have mowed the lawn, but there's still an awful lot of high weeds and growth that needs to be cleaned up along the fence.
They didn't touch the back lot either.
Didn't they do back? Yeah, I didn't get up by and look, but I did get an email from him last week that it was, that he did mow, but.
What's going on? Not still no plans for Oak Street for the rebuild?
We didn't get any revised plans yet. Last communication with the property owner and the contractor was maybe two weeks ago, and they implied that we should see some new plans, you know, any day, but we have not yet seen anything come through, so.
Okay. Fire company, report.
I don't have nothing to report. We're up to 118 calls for the year. Todd, did you go get a chance to look at Cross Street, that sinkhole?
Yeah, I just put a stake and flags on it tonight, so nobody drives into it.
I didn't see a stake or flags, and most of my money pulled it out or something.
I hope not, because I just, I just did it at, I just did it at 20 after 6:00. So I hope they didn't take it that quick.
I said we just got back from, I ran up here, so I didn't.
When I looped around, turned around, almost hit your truck, maybe I should have done that. You could have come out to see what I was doing.
But yeah.
So the 118 calls so far this year, where does that stand for like this time last year?
Uh, we're up a little bit.
This year?
Yeah, this year, we're up a little bit, not much, a little bit. We're getting more calls this year. Traffic, traffic accidents and everything else.
What is the majority of the?
Of the calls? Most of them is traffic accidents, but we've been getting a lot of structural fires this year. Actual house fires and everything. No problem.
Any other questions? Okay, Regional Parks Recreation Commission, there's a YMCA roses of the Spring Grove Branch Board meeting on the 15th of July held at Little Creek Park. The renovation project update is moving along. It's on schedule for substantial completion slated for the end of January. The childcare has wrapped up now. That took place at Spring Grove Elementary. The new CEO, President of the Y, was announced, it's Mike Smith. He's starting August 1st, so he started last Friday. Larry Richardson will be staying on, on a retainer until the Spring Grove project renovation's done. The Summer Social at Farmer's Field has been moved to September 12th. Pumpkin Trail is scheduled for the October 11th. There's backup for weather for that day. Spring Grove Boroughs having a Christmas in July 5K on the 26th of July, and reports were given by the other municipalities and townships. No report for the playground progress. And then after that meeting, the Director of the Y came up with the date for August 8, which is this Friday at 10:00 AM, to have a, an event, Storytime Craft and Nature Walk down here at the park, Rail Trail Park in Seven Valleys at 10 o'clock. Any questions on, on that? Unfinished business.
I keep trying, Doug, I don't know if you've had any communication, but I have emailed David Gonzalez numerous times over the last couple of months looking for an update on this last mile of fiber optic line. I don't even get a response.
It might be better than the email, Brendan. I think I have an email address.
Okay.
We might be able to get a better response.
Okay.
I don't know what technically David's job title is. I think he's kind of outgrown what he was doing a little bit with them, so.
Which is fine, I understand that, but I wish he would have forwarded it, but. Was Commissioner Reel, or was she pretty involved in that as well? Or just kind of a spokesperson?
I think so, I mean, she was supposed to be. You know, I don't think, I would think she would have been more than.
Well, if you have info on this, Brendan, I.
Brendan Sager's, I think it's named, but yeah, I should have an email address for you. I can refer it to you.
I'll look, see if maybe I have something.
No, I, I think he's there, but I think he's. Oh, you said you.
Yeah, so that's all I had on that. Zoning Hearing Board resignation. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we accepted the resignation of Beth Keinert. So tonight, the next item here, that resolution will be looking to fill her position, but also did formally receive the resignation letter from Zoning Hearing Board for Bev Conkle, which is effective September 1st. So we would just.
Bev, we can't do anything till after the.
Right, exactly.
But you can take action on the one for Beth tonight. And did you double check those dates? Because I know I emailed you that that was not consistent with what I had on my list.
That's what I had.
A long time ago, but if you probably have more updated, that's fine.
That's what was in the directory from last year.
Okay.
Yeah, so. So leaves us up to the next item. The resolution for a zoning hearing board appointment. As you know, I did put it on the website, I put it on Facebook. I had two, I think here, two inquiries. One was just for zoning hearing board that asked, you know, if it's been filled yet. I responded to that person and said, no, it hasn't, but I didn't get anything back from them again. The other one was an individual who was interested in knowing more about Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board. However, he wasn't a resident, he was a property owner, but not a resident. So I explained that to him, and then the only other one that I received was Tina Stiles expressed an interest in the zoning hearing board. So I did get a formal email of interest from her. I have not heard from anyone else up to this point.
Okay, so.
So the only name we have is if counsel wants to appoint Tina, we would do that through the form of this resolution. Just need a first and a second.
I'll make a motion to 20 Tina Stiles, on the zoning hearing board.
First?
Second.
Deb, second?
Bill, you'll want to abstain on this.
Yep.
So you're abstaining, correct?
I abstain, yes.
But you can call for the vote. You can call for the vote, you just can't, you just have to note that you abstained because of a family relationship.
So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Do I need to back, do I need to backtrack because I'm a family relationship too?
How close?
Sister.
Sister.
Yeah.
Can he make the motion?
You can make the motion, you can second it, but you can't vote on it.
Okay, gotcha.
Gary, an aye?
Okay.
Abstain. So all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no?
So we do have 4-0, okay. Because you can vote on it if we can't get into the rule of necessity where that's the only way, but you have 4, so you're good, so.
Okay, so we have Bev's resignations. Does that get on the agenda for next month?
Correct.
So how many do we have in zoning hearing board now?
Three. Until September, yeah, until September 1st.
So we can have that first meeting that we're talking about.
Yeah, we have a meeting scheduled in August, so, yeah, we'll be able to have this in here.
Who's the third person?
Gosh, I've got to start and think.
My list, my list still has John McDonald on it, so that's a little old.
That's, it's Jody. Jody McDonald.
Jolie.
Jolie.
His wife, and there is Jody.
And then does her term expire?
End of this year.
This year, okay.
No, she'd be 28, yeah.
Next, I am Planning Commission resignations. I've got formal resignations now from, let me get my cheat sheet here. Yeah, Larry Garland and John Neal, who are both moving from the borough, and Ashley Stiles, who is resigning just due to family commitments. So we will.
Have we taken action on any of those resignations yet?
I told John Neal's wife a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
They're not moving now.
Yeah, they're not.
Oh.
And I said, well, he's still beyond the Planning Commission, and she said, yes.
Okay.
So. That, that goes back to this question. If, if we have not yet received their formal resignations, or if they have not moved from the borough and therefore automatically disqualified, we can't take action on declaring the seats vacant and filling them. So you have to go by what you have. If you have any outstanding vacancies, you can take action on those, but if these three people are still here and haven't resigned, they're members of the Planning Commission.
So we would only need to take action to accept the resignation of Larry Garland and Ashley Stiles.
And you have this, correct?
No, we're going to do that tonight.
No, but you have received.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry, sorry.
Documentation.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You have received written resignation?
Yes, yep, yep. Um, he sent it to me, and I have it in form of a text, which I can print. But, but we would only be acting on, acting on Larry Garland and Ashley Stiles tonight, since he's, we haven't acted on it yet, and.
Has Mary actually moved?
No, not yet. But he just said he has a lot in preparation of that, so. Going on right now. And we'll have to go back and do, act on the resignation of Bev Conkle too, to accept that effective September 1st.
Well, you can do that at the September meeting, or you can do it now if you want to.
And then we're not allowed to put on the agenda again next month.
Okay.
So the first thing is, we need a motion and action by council to accept the resignation of Bev Conkle from the Zoning Hearing Board effective September 1st.
Greg?
I'll second it.
Greg and Greg.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, next.
Then the next action would be to accept the resignation of Larry Garland and Ashley Stiles.
I'll make that motion.
Greg?
Second.
And I'll abstain on this one.
Okay. Well, you don't have to abstain to accept the resignation.
I'll abstain, yeah.
If you don't want him to resign, you can do that.
Can we?
This would be effective as of this date.
Yes, the state, correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Just to note on the filling the appointments, this does not have to be done by resolution. This can be done by motion. It's the zoning hearing board that requires a resolution, but if we want to fill those two vacancies, you can do that merely by motion. And as, as was, you know, some questions were raised today, and again, you know, my, my brain finally started to function around 3:30 this afternoon, and yes, on a five-member Planning Commission, two of the five members may be members of the governing body. So two members of council may serve on a five-member Planning Commission. Well, unless some, there's other ones on there, so. I mean, at one time Larry and John were members of council, but they obviously are not anymore.
So seven people don't get an extra person?
I'm sorry, Cheryl?
Well, we have a seven member, so they don't get an extra person?
We only have five, don't we? For Planning Commission. It's three, no, we have, so, so we currently, is it correct, Todd? We do currently have two, two, well, counting John, we'd have, we have three members.
We have three, yeah.
Okay, so we'd have a quorum if you don't get anybody else. And, and who is, who is that other, who's, who are the other two that are on now?
Gosh.
John Patterson one.
Yeah, John Patterson and, oh, lives in Brown, Rhonda.
Okay.
Rhonda Schreeter.
Okay, so neither, neither of them nor John are public, are, they're all public members. So the other two members could be, if you don't have anybody else and somebody wants to do it, the other two members could also be members of Borough Council.
Do, do we have commitments from John and Rhonda that are available for the 19th?
I don't from John, because when I asked for that commitment, that's when he told me he's resigning and sent me the text and everything. But Rhonda and John Patterson, yes.
That's the John I meant.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, John Patterson, Rhonda.
Yep, so I'll reach out to John Neal and.
Okay, is there anybody on council that would be interested in sitting on the Planning Commission?
It's not a big command of people.
Let's see if we can get a quorum. Again, reminder too, the Planning Commission is, it is not mandatory that the zoning applications be reviewed by the Planning Commission. If they are not available or unable to do it, it still goes to the zoning hearing board without a recommendation. So it is not essential if you can't get three people, Todd.
Oh, no, I'm aware of that. There's some municipalities that only send it to the Planning Commission.
Oh, I know.
They just go straight to the zoning hearing board.
The zoning board get pissed off because the Planning Commission would never follow the law. I have quite a few like that.
Yeah, I know one. I know one.
Yes.
All right, anything else, any thoughts?
Yep, that's all I have on unfinished, so.
New business?
It's, we're in here in August already, so we really, I looked at the calendar when we did this last. We put it out for bid September and awarded in October. So we have a little time, you know, between now and next month if we want to make any changes or fine tune what you have. So I did email everybody a copy of the last specifications that we used. You know, I highlight one thing, you know, I don't know, we haven't had them for a long time. Those bulk containers. I don't know how, how you do that, because before, you know, they were the 55-gallon drums that were steel, and they used to empty them, but now they don't, and we tried the toders, they disappeared. I could see if this was a heavily commercial area with a lot of pedestrian traffic, but, but that's a decision council will have to make. The quantities, again, you know, you have to think about that. If you want to keep it to four containers, if you want to think about toders.
One thing I want to throw out with the other municipalities I'm dealing with right now this year. Number one, Red Lion got four bidders, which is unheard of in the past. But every one of them has said toders, 100% toders only for trash and recycling. They don't want bags because they're going to one-in, one-person trucks with the hydraulic arm on it for both trash and recycling. So we have to, I don't know if it would be worth reaching out and asking them if they're, if this year they're requiring toders only or not when we get the specs drawn up. Because if you put it out without toders only, you may not get bids.
Well, can we, can we put it out? It's good in multiple ways.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that's kind of, in my understanding, the last time we did this, I think that was part of the ideal, and it didn't really happen the way I thought it was going to happen. Because I know even at that time, I thought we talked about, you know, maybe doing, which they don't do anymore, the paper bag kind of thing, where they buy the bags of rudders or get the stickers or whatever, and that didn't really come, and I knew that was part of. Was there, did we do the tipping free increase that in that?
The flood.
Because that was another thing that we thought was going to save us money, but it didn't really ever do it.
The other thing that you did for the multi was multi-year breakdowns.
Yeah.
And then they gave you them and you picked, yeah.
Going forward, I think that's what we need to do as well, and I mean, I mean, I think, you know, toders are the only way that we can go. I mean, I think that's probably the ideal, and I think, I'll be honest, I think most of the borough residents would prefer a toter if it was provided to them, you know. of our residents would prefer a toter if it was provided to them, you know.
I like it the way it is.
No, I understand.
I like it the way it is.
I understand, but the problem is, I don't know if we're gonna get a bid.
Yeah, and here's the problem that you run into with the toters, and that is, there are some places, now, again, going, for example, with Redline, and you've heard from West York, there are certain places, 99% of the, 90% of the trash in Redline is collected in the alleys behind houses. Some places you can't do it, because the houses don't go the whole way back to the alleys, like on West Broadway across from my office, you can't. So what happens when the toter's there and somebody pulls their car in front of them? That's part of the problem.
Well, I guess also, it was, I know one of the reasons Republic didn't even, I thought, bid it last time, was for one, they didn't have a truck that could come down here to provide the armed service. So that's why we only had Penn Waste with it on the back, where they still needed two guys, they still used the small truck. So that may be, if that's their choice, that's what they're gonna choose, but I mean, you know, that means they still provide the toters, they still have the hydraulic lift on the back, they just have to use the smaller truck. And I'll be honest, half the time, I think it's only one guy in the small truck, and he just stops and gets out anyway.
Well, that, yeah, that I don't see. I only see the driver using the sidearm.
Yeah.
But the point was, for years and years, Republic would not bid, because we would not put in the fuel escalation clause. Finally, we put in the fuel escalation clause, and they said, we're not bidding on any new municipalities unless it's toter only.
Well, I mean, that's, and they didn't think they could provide that service to us.
Well, it's something you could think about, like you said, you know, maybe two different options. Just, give you an example, we just went through this in the spring, the Treesbury Township, we bid two options. We offered two different services. One is either the full 96-gallon cart, or for those that didn't generate as much, we offered 26-bag service, so basically a bag every other week. So that was the one option, to continue with that. The other option was to continue with the full service of the 96-gallon toter, or eliminate the bag service, do a 32-gallon toter, where they get a weekly pickup and a bulk item. And to follow up on what Mike said, we had three bids, which, as he says, unusual. I had a pre-bid conference and actually had four contractors that were interested. We got three bids. Republic did bid, but they did not bid on option one, which was the bag service. But they did bid on.
Well, I think that's two, I would like to see more bidders, whatever they choose to bid.
And my suggestion would be this, and we are a little early, but we would get the specs prepared and approved at the September meeting for bidding in October or November, probably October. But that gives, and I can see what the results are. Redline's gonna open their bids next week. I can tell you then what the results are, who's saying what, and we can incorporate that, the good things into what we want to spec when we approve it next month.
Well, and I think that's why we also talked about starting this process a little earlier than last time, because I think the last time we felt we were kind of wrong, kind of were.
I'd really recommend to just watch the language on the bulk item pickups. I think I said a couple of months ago, in Lower Chanceford Township, they just completely eliminated it. We have to pay for every bulk item that we want picked up, and it's $20 per pickup.
For the large item?
Yeah. So we want to make sure if you guys want that to continue to be provided, that it's locked in, and the penalty clause is becoming super important. I think everybody's heard of a horror story somewhere, the trash just continuously is not getting picked up. So some way to, and Redline had a great penalty clause in their contract, it was really good. So that's my two recommendations, is just make sure those are fit for the residents.
Can I ask you a question? Now, I have a big toter, okay? My son-in-law gave it to me, one Penn Waste gave him theirs, and it has a lid, and the guy does, take it out to the end of the truck. But we put our bags inside. Now, if we go this way, would you still be allowed to put bags inside that toter?
You're supposed to. You're supposed to. They frown on loose trash being put in the toter.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Most people, yeah, most people want bags. Now, of course, you know, I get out of my Durango, I'll throw a soda bottle or something in recycle, or trash bag in, you know, but they typically like most garbage in bags in the toter.
That's what I wanted to ask, because I wouldn't, I don't want to put my stuff in.
The other thing, too, and I don't know, Todd, how yours turned out, but typically the actual difference in price between the 34-gallon toter and the 96 is not very much. It's like maybe six bucks a quarter?
Oh, no, ours was.
Was yours significant?
Mm-hmm.
Good, okay.
Well, we had a very unusual bid. Our trash actually dropped $70 a year.
Nice.
Wow.
Nice.
We had Penn Waste, and they knew there were other bidders, because we did the pre-bid conference, so they knew there was other bidders, and they way underbid. In fact, it's a three-year contract, and with the option of two-year extensions. If the two-year extensions were to happen, year five is going to be less than what our residents are paying right now.
So maybe we want to put our specifications out of pre-bid conference.
Email me a copy of your specs.
Yeah.
Compare it with what we do.
And so that really worked out well for us, and to follow up on what Sam said, penalties is important, too, because right now, we're having a heck of a time with Penn Waste, Treesbury Township.
Same, and he's still.
And we've assessed penalties, they're up almost $80,000. One week, they missed 310 homes.
Do they actually pay you?
They're talking to us right now.
Okay, talking and paying are two different things.
Well, initially, they were gonna pay, they just talked to us to see if they can work out some other deal. They're looking, we just signed a three-year contract, so they're looking at throwing in a spring and a fall yard cleanup that we don't have now, shredded events. So they're looking at doing community events. Now, my board meets Wednesday nights, we'll see. I don't think they'll get off scot-free without kind of, some kind of cash penalty, but.
They blaming it on changing personnel?
That's what I've heard.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've met with them a couple of times, so I'm glad we're not having any issues here, so. We do, I did email Penn Waste and Restucia to make sure that they pay particular attention to those homes where the curb and sidewalk projects are being done, not to use that as an excuse not to pick them up, so. All right, I'm done talking trash.
You were waiting for that one.
What's that?
I said you were waiting for that one.
If anyone else is, but I'm done.
Planning commission meeting?
Oh, yeah, just this is informational. We do have the planning commission meeting scheduled for August 19. Zoning Hearing Board will be meeting August 25. The first application is for a variance to the required placement of paving for multifamily residential use. If you remember, this was the one where it converted from a, it used to be a four-unit, went to a two, and then when you go from a two-unit to a multifamily, it requires it to be asphalt. So that came up at the zoning hearing board meeting, so he's coming back through for that as a variance. And then the second one is for, you know, from last month, Earl and Joan Landis, 3537 Church Street, who are looking for a variance, number one, to add a second principal use, number two, requiring off-street parking. So I don't know if that fell through up at the Cherry Street property or not, and then minimum lot size and building setbacks. So they are public meetings, and they will be held here in this room.
And that's it.
Treasurer's report.
Any questions for me? Kind of a quiet month.
Is anything need highlighted? If there's no questions, we'll need a motion to pay, to approve and accept the filing statement for authorized treasurer to pay the bills for the income of $7,301.65, expenses $6,687.98, and the fund balance combined from $544,678.61. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mark?
Second.
Gary. We have a first and second, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Secondary report?
Couple of quick things, PayPal is set up now, so I'll get with Jessica when they're ready to go live on that. We do now have a new borough phone number, if anyone wants to write down. I'll start slowly transitioning and getting that word out there, but it is 717-347-8393. It'll still come to my cell phone, but it's an app, so, yeah. Thank you, Jessica, for pointing us in that direction. Nice feature. All right. The, I put on here, maybe Doug, you're gonna talk about PSAB Fall Conference?
I'll leave it a little bit.
I'll let you hit that. Other than that, I think that is all that I had.
Thank you.
So, I will, starting with that, so, like I said, I do have a conference, I don't know if anybody thought about it, free, for the attendance fee, now that doesn't include hotel. I would be happy to attend, and Borough, you know, has no problem with expenses, but I do, I will offer to anybody here, please let me know by next month, or if anybody would like to attend. I encourage anybody that has never attended one to go, to try it, check it out, go network, go meet other people. But again, it's up at State College, October 3rd through the 5th. If not, like I said, I do plan on attending, but like I said, I am offering that to anybody else on Borough Council that would like to go. Second, me and Todd talked a little bit over the last week about workers' comp, and I have, I asked Todd to do a little research and get some information, where we learned that a volunteer with the fire company was hurt, potentially hurt, or was injured outside of fire company activity, and was possibly still had the ability to run fire calls at the same time, and we were worried about workers' comp and liability. I would like, you know, the borough to have an official policy where anybody on Borough Council, or employees, or any kind of fire company leadership, you know, that if they learn about a volunteer, it's not that we're trying to prevent them from running fire calls or anything, or volunteering, it's more of covering, you know, ourselves and the liability risk, you know. We are using borough residents' taxpayer monies for that, and I think it's only fair that we do it responsibly, but I'd like that policy in place that would provide that a written doctor's note, you know, would need it in return to full active duty for, you know, if it's light duty, you know.
In our laws, not the interruption.
Yep.
In our laws, it's wrote that way.
Okay.
If they find out they're hurt, they gotta get a doctor's note for their comp.
Well, yeah, I think with the borough, we need that in writing, again, with a policy in place that protects themselves also. I mean, it does protect the fire company, but it looks like they do have it on, pretty much on handle, but I think it, a collaboration of also, you know, if they would get that note, it would be passed on to us, or vice versa. So again, doing some research on that, I believe Todd might have a call into our workers' comp insurance provider to get some research and get some information of what we can do in that.
Yeah, this came up because of an incident that just happened recently. I received an email from a resident for a different matter, and that individual stated that they have a procedure being done on their back this week. So that kind of raised a red flag to me, so I called Albert, as fire chief, and asked him if that individual was still running. He said he hadn't been around for a while, but the fire company did follow up promptly and told him that until he gets a doctor's note, that he can't run. But he did, this way, yeah, yeah. So he did get a doctor's note, so, but I agree with Doug, we should probably have something in writing.
Typically, the way we'd want to work that is, is if anybody is off of a full-time job, if they're receiving any type of compensation or disability, they're precluded from any type of firefighting activities other than administrative or fundraising.
Yep, that's how it's most worded.
Get Todd and I a copy of that. I mean, I think I have a copy of your current.
Yeah, your file, you will never have it.
Okay, I still, okay, I'll take a look at it, man.
Yeah, it says if your doctors care, anything, you need a doctor's note to come back.
Okay, well, we want to maybe make it a little clearer, but particularly, if somebody's off work, receiving workers' comp from their full-time job, or any type of disability, they shouldn't be actively doing anything.
I would also, I mean, I don't think, too, I mean, anything that you're, like, you might not be seeing, you know.
Any type of restrictions.
Yeah, any type of restriction.
Or any injury.
But then again, what you and I think of light duty, somebody else might, we have to clarify.
And then finally, kind of community-minded, again, this has no, nothing from the borough or the fire company, but Matt Baldwin, a local resident here in the borough, Sussex County, Oregon, is up here, he is hosting on Saturday, August 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00, over here in the fire company. He is calling it York County Fiddler's Picnic, so it was, he's basically trying to revamp the York County Fiddler's Convention that was held in Felton for, I mean, I would say maybe 100 years, I mean, a long time. So he's hosting that, he has multiple bands all day long. You know, it could be a busy day in the borough. He has, he's saying, he has about 800 people that are interested in the event on social media, now whether all they show up, you know, again, but it could be, he has been doing, you know, his own due diligence, parking, he's got approval of course of the fire company. His properties want to use in the field, Liberty Christian Fellowship has offered their parking lot for that use. You know, I think, I'm not guaranteeing this, but, you know, if you're a local resident, he may let you come through the gates and ask for a donation. I mean, he is selling tickets at $12, $13 apiece all day, he's gonna have food trucks, the fire company will have the kitchen open, is my understanding. They are gonna move it inside if it was raining, but again, you know, it could be a busy day in the borough that day, so you see a lot of cars, or people, public parking, and walking the sidewalks, it's probably where they're heading, so. That would be Saturday, August 23rd, from start to 10:00, he's expecting a deal around 9:00. He's asking no, you know, alcohol and all that, I mean, he's not, but, I mean, so it shouldn't get out of hand, you know, I would hope, like, you know how festivals and these can go. But again, you know, somebody's looking for something to do, or you hear, they hear the banjos, they're not up in the hills, they're right here in the valley. So, other than that, I got nothing else.
Thanks, Doug. Any collection?
Same.
Okay, and then the Springfield Township Month Report?
I think I missed it this month, I never got one, probably in my junk file.
It's there.
I'll look. I did not see it before the meeting.
Anything I have, I mentioned last month about that local share account, the LSA grant funding possibility. I did talk to Dave Davidson, who's the engineer for the Sewer Authority, and he did tell me that their goal is to try to doctor the Church Street pump station until 2027, which is when the initial note is paid off, and then start to tackle, you know, the improvements that need to be made. And this is a particular grant that they have never applied for, so. is a particular grant that they have never applied for. So, let's counsel, is there objections? I'm going to be working with Dave and trying to draft something up and submit it. There's no harm in that. If we don't get it the first time, we try a second time. So, but, so we'll get started on that.
Good.
You're saying in 2027, the loan will be paid off?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. But then that's when we have to start making improvements, the things that start to wear out.
Almost like we have to go into another one.
Yeah.
Under different terms.
Yeah.
I didn't say that.
Okay, council, council mayor comments. Cheryl?
I am going to, to the PSAB Conference of Board Meeting tomorrow in Pittsburgh.
What time do you have it?
As a question, I kind of forgot earlier. Is the Maple Street going to get mowed along the banks?
I'll follow up with Springfield, because they usually do that automatically in July.
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to be done in July. It's getting pretty bad.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Springfield.
Anything else, Greg? Stan? Mike?
Just a word, just in general. Again, I bring this up before, but be on the lookout for scammers. Phone and email. It is just getting, it's, it's getting crazy. So just keep your eyes out. If you see something strange, it probably is.
A lot with PayPal, yes.
I got one the other day telling me if I didn't pay a fine on the turnpike, they'll come to get me. I have to come get me because I've been on the turnpike for years.
Yeah, they will not, they, yeah, they will not do anything via telephone. None, none of the enforcement agencies do anything by phone. That's the number one sign, especially if it shows up on your caller ID as Brooklyn, New York.
Doug? Gary?
Just following up, I know I said something a while back, that I actually did pay some money for the PMS well-span service here a while back. And I got another letter from a recent letter about a week after our meeting. Chad Deardorff, I don't know if that rings out for anybody, but they're claiming that they are going to honor current memberships through December 31st. And then they will try to go through their membership. It will be mailed in November of 2025 with complete details, upcoming membership drive, and how to renew your coverage. Anybody, I guess I'm the only one in the Borough that's got one.
I got one, no.
But anybody want this guy, want this number? It says if you have any questions, I guess that would be like to get on a list. It's 717-793-2291. And his name is Chad Deardorff. So, I guess I'll see something a little bit more in detail in November, and then we'll see what, see what they actually cover, what their, their whole deal is, if you get a membership. I did not call him. No, I did not.
I thought the letter was very self-explanatory, though. They want to go on an annual basis. So they're gonna basically give you free from now until the end of the year, and then start the new year with a new cost and a new, a new date to renew each year. I think it was nice.
Does anybody know, Todd, do you, do you know, I had a friend last year that they thought she was having a heart attack, and they, well, they called well-span first, and then because they thought they were having a heart attack, she had Jacobus come, and she had to pay a big bill because she didn't belong to Jacobus. So are we gonna have to belong to Jacobus, too?
You would. What came out of Jacobus would have probably been the medic unit that accompanied the regular ambulance, the BLS, basic life BLS. So, yeah, I mean, in this area, if, because it's not like the old days with ambulance services, you just give reciprocal services. So I mean, if there's the potential for you to have advanced life support, that would come out of Jacobus, and you would want their membership.
I belong to both of them, and I was wondering if that's gonna be the same like this year, too.
It, it would be, yeah.
Anything else, Gary? Mark?
Back to what Jessica was saying about rental inspections. Who would do that? And at what cost? Because I really don't think that's a bad idea. I mean, what she was talking about seemed pretty bad.
We've talked about this several times before, though, and there was always a reason that we didn't do it. I did have a question, though. If, if, for example, Jessica has this list of complaints or things, if somebody called and complained, do you, Todd, would you have our inspector go look at that automatically?
I, I would not, because there's nothing, well, it depends. I mean, there's certain things that might be under the Uniform Construction Code, which could make it an unsafe structure. But the UCC doesn't get into the mold issue, you know, flooding, things like that.
The problem with that is, is that description, that, that leads to uninhabability of the property. And that, that, under, under Pennsylvania landlord-tenant law, that's, that's an absolute, you know, you don't have to pay the rent. You could basically argue you have a constructive eviction. So, I mean, and, you know, the municipalities that I've been involved with have shied away from that. You know, it just, to answer your question, though, you'd have to hire an inspector. And you typically would charge a fee for a yearly inspection. When it's been brought up, in, in Redline, you have the room filled primarily with tenants saying they don't want to be disturbed by an inspector. And obviously, they're tenants of a good landlord. You've always got the bad ones that you should be able to take care of. Typically, it's done civilly through, through the courts, because it's, it's just not, you know, when, when you violate the landlord-tenant law and uninhabability, there are some severe sanctions available against a landlord. And what Redline ended up doing, they have the smoke detector ordinance, they have the tenant registration ordinance, and that's basically it.
So the manager handles it because it's just smoke detectors?
Yeah, and they, because the code enforcement officer goes around once a year and tests the smoke detector.
Make sure it's plugged in, and most of the time, the tenants will put it in. He tests it, they take it out. To be completely honest, that's a structural fire, because they see it all the time.
And what we hear constantly from the fire company is they go in there, and the battery's out of the smoke detector because somebody needed it for the TV control. And I don't know, I don't know what happened. We saw, just saw something in Stewartstown. And I know, yeah, the people ended up, that there was homicide involved in that. But my first thought was, bad, bad smoke detectors, or no smoke detectors in the building. So-
It has not been ruled a homicide. It's questionable circumstances.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, something bullet in the head to me is homicide.
I'm gonna wait for the professionals to tell us what it was.
I mean, I am, I am aware, you know, the managers at Glen, Glen Rock and Spring Grove. And I do know two inspectors that do rental property inspections. I mean, I can always just gather information and get back to you next month what's all involved. I've never personally been involved in, in that, but part of the-
Do you have an appetite to, for Todd to dig into it?
The other thing you have to consider, too, is, is things that she brought up, like I said, they're clear violation of landlord-tenant code because of having, making a property uninhabitable. If, if your ceiling falls in, if you can't, you know, this, this, you know, saying you can't turn an air conditioner on, well, the, the tenant should be paying for the electricity. So it's not a landlord's business, whether, what, what temperature that the, the tenant keeps the house at, whether it's heat or cold. And the other thing, it, it's, it's, those are the things that aren't covered by the building code, and I'm not sure we have anything that would cover.
I do know air conditioning, unfortunately, in Pennsylvania is not part of uninhabability.
But that would be, that, the municipality would not be involved in the enforcement of the tenant landlord.
Yeah, you would. Because you'd do the inspection. If we had it, you would do-
No, I mean today. Correct.
Right now, yeah.
Correct. That's the habit of, it's, it's a private action with the district court. Yes. Yeah.
Because, yeah, I mean, I think you would need a tenant registration, that, ordinance as well to go along with that, because I would think it would be kind of like what the Sewer Authority does with their sump pump testing or plumbing system when the property changes hands. I mean, we can, I mean, I don't know, I mean-
I think a tenant registration, even, even without this, with the property maintenance, I think's important.
Well, that's part of the, the issue with per capita taxes that we went through not too long ago. And again, that's, and again, Redline, the landlord's responsible within 30 days of providing who the new tenant is.
And that would be, it would be good for income tax, for the local income tax.
It's also good, like, when I sent out notices, like, for Church Street, you know, I send the current resident. But I don't know if they have a PO box or a street address that they use. And so sometimes I get things back. I don't know if it ever really reaches them. And so, those types of things. Code enforcement would be really helpful.
We have to send that to the landlord.
And the tenant.
All right. So, what's council's desire? For me, just gather some information at this point?
I think so.
Okay. I'll, I'll get you, cops, what I have in Redline, too.
Is that as well as the tenant registration?
Yeah, yeah. That's the easy one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Who would pay for the inspection?
Typically, you'd establish a fee. A yearly fee would be established for an inspection. You would probably have a, a one rate and then a second rate for a follow-up, if somebody's in violation.
So the landlord would be paid for that?
Yeah, it would be part of, part of the, part of, yeah, it would be a fee that would be charged to, for all rental properties. It would be, probably be a per-property fee per year with, again, something in it for, to pay for follow-ups if there are violations.
It's basically a rental license, correct? That's how they look at it. And it's a fee that would cover those inspections. And again-
Do you know that do it for the change of a resident, change of a resident, too, or a complaint-based?
That would be up to how you'd want to do it in terms of organization and enforcement.
Because I mean, like I said, I think our, our goal is to weed out the bad ones.
Problem you run into is, if, if you have a tenant move out, and you're gonna get somebody in the next week, you call the Borough Office, they're gonna say it's three weeks till I can get somebody there.
I understand that. I mean, I think that's a contingency thing where, you know, it's based on, you know, or, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I do think Jessica makes a valid point, and I'm sure this happens quite often. I, I mean, I, I know, I would be hesitant. If it's complaint, even if it's complaint-based, and I file a complaint, the landlord's gonna know it was me, and then it's gonna make my life miserable.
The landlord's gonna blame the tenant regardless who complains.
Yeah, but if it's an annual, if it's an annual, then that kind of avoids that situation.
Annual or change of a resident, change of-
Yeah.
The other, the other thing to keep in mind, too, and this goes back to, Millersville tends to be in litigation on this a lot because of being a college town. And their fees and what is reasonable, because you have to remember, when you charge a fee, it is supposed to be commensurate with covering expenses. It is not to be a revenue raiser for the municipality. And therefore, we have to constantly watch it, keep an eye on what we're spending to enforce just this, to make sure that the fee that we're charging is reasonable for it. If we decide to do that.
Mark, anything else? Greg? Anything I have is, Doug mentioned that in the last two meetings about the, the Fall Conference. And I, I myself am not available to go. And, and Doug is interested in going. And I, I feel like, do we want to have some closure here? That if, if someone is not interested or interested in going, let, let him know as soon as you can, so he can make those plans. Because we'll, we'll have to make, the, the Fall Conference, the 3rd through the 5th, is before the October meeting. So we, we have to take action on expenses for whoever goes up for next meeting. So, it's not wait till next meeting to take care of that.
Yeah, just so you get a reservation for a room.
I mean, I think no matter what is somebody's interest, I think we want to make a reservation this week just to hold it, you know. And if somebody would be interested, I can always say, Gary, you can have my reservation, too. But I mean, you know, I, I do have to check. I haven't, I forgot to check my schedule today. But even if, even if I don't get there Friday, like, morning, I can get there Friday evening, I'm sure. But, yeah, I mean, but like I said, if they might, I, I'm operating to anybody first. So I'd like to see somebody who go, I'd like somebody experienced that has never experienced it.
Thank you. Todd, anything? Public comment? Open it back up.
First, thank you for your consideration on the rental inspection program. I think it is gonna benefit a lot of residents. And then, just wanna let you know that the water fountain's not working. So if you heard a lot of noises, it's because my kids forced it to work.
Yeah, we, they, since we've been in here, they haven't been working. I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're just turned off. I don't know.
A lot of public water fountains were shut down during COVID and never turned back on.
I believe, I, I know when the ambulance, they just turned them off because they weren't being used.
Unplugged, compressor's not running.
Yeah.
Maybe we can plug them back in for Borough Council.
Oh, and I really, I do like the idea of the workers' comp, because I know of a similar situation, not with, like, a municipality or anything, but the guy was injured off job, came in, he lifted more than he was supposed to, and now he's filing. So, you do get that a lot.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Here. Thank you. Tina Stana, 79 Church. Just a question. Thank you for letting me get on the zoning hearing board. We have a, a meeting on August 25th. Is that to make a decision?
Yes.
Okay. So that's showtime. How do I get, how do I get that information?
You'll be getting the, the full application, everything, this week, and a copy of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, okay. I wanted to see that.
And, and the Plan, the Planning Commission will thoroughly vet the applicant to all the necessary requirements. I can assure you of that.
Yeah. I don't want to be lost for words, which I doubt I would, but-
And there is a, there is a solicitor that's present for the zoning hearing board as well.
Who's that?
Beth Kern.
CGA.
CGA.
Oh, cool. And it's here.
Oh, that reminds me. You have to do an ethics statement. Todd will get you one. Statement of financial interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I guess I have to do it for every-
For that position. Yeah. I'm sorry, I threw you off, didn't I?
That's okay. The only other thing I can, I, just hearing that landlord-tenant thing, Jessica, I understand your problem with, with some of these people having issues, but they really need to contact the landlord, because it is a landlord-tenant thing, probably, because they're the ones, they have the upper hand there. If their ceiling fell, the Borough would be doing that. That's, they can, they can contact the landlord. You know what I mean? They, because, would you want to live there? That's my thing, you know, just, I don't know. Just my two cents.
Thank you. Nothing else? We'll call for enjoyment.